Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Abriscado?
Here.
Ms. Alberti?
Present.
Ms. Alcurio?
Present.
Mr. Demas?
Four.
Mr. Grillo?
Four.
Here.
Ms. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Schleck?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Musso? Here.
I had the notice of this meeting, as was provided by the following means, annual notice was sent to the Herald and News. The record? No. South Bergen I have observed, Towns clerk posted in the lobby of town hall, the board office saying forthcoming senior work meetings is public meeting to the board.
I'd like to make a motion that Ron Gillis shut up.
Sure.
All right. Alright, I guess we're gonna go to finance? Finance committee, Mr. Schleck? Any questions?
It's crowded on the inside.
No, I have no questions, Ron. Right now, you know, I haven't had a chance to look at the budget, so I talked to David, I'll look at these guys.
What I've been having PAC do is that anything highlighted in yellow was, did not appear on packets that were sent home. This way you can easily identify what's different.
I received a joint transportation agreement this morning in the mail, and it's something that I have to do, so that's why it's on the agenda. But, I'd just like to point out, so you're aware, okay, number nine. Number nine is something new to the Lenner's Board of Education. We are going to use $417,356 of bank cap money, okay, and I'll explain that in a minute, to subsidize this year's budget. So, our budget is going up 3.23% on the tax levy. It's not going up 2% on the tax levy. We're exceeding 2% on the tax levy.
So you have to go get for growth?
No.
No. We're only approving, we're approving the bank cap. In 1213, in the fiscal, in the school year of 1213, when I prepared the budget, it was only at 1%. I think it was at .9. So, we banked $371,000 in capped money in 1213. Last year, we were $45,000 in change under cap. If you take those two numbers together, those are the 417. That's the 417. Now, if you take it over 1213, 1314, 1415, 1516, and you average all of those numbers, you're at 2%. Okay? But in 1213, you were only at .9. And then in 1415, you were a shade under 2%, it was like 1.93, okay? But if you take it now with this year's budget utilizing this number, you're at 2% cap every year on an average. The other thing I need to tell you is, is the $371,000 in bank cap. We either use it or lose it this year, so if we don't use it?
It's gone.
It's gone forever.
On the question, I did have a question, a couple of times.
Sure.
Well, I guess I'll defer the rest until Ron looks over. On page 10 of, I don't want to mention it, please, you know, this question.
Position control roster?
Yeah, yeah. These are, listen, are these two separate stipends? This, and then this one here? Because it's two different numbers.
Ms. Robb?
Page 10 on the position control roster.
If you save a quarter of salary, a quarter of salary for regular students, a quarter of salary for... So it gets split up.
Mail it together.
So, so it's 25% of his number. His number is this total, so it's a four.
It's definitely 25% of that.
So we could take one different line.
Correct, because it has to be spread out through the budget.
Alright.
It's an allocation, is what it asks.
Are we allowed to talk about?
Position control roster?
Yes.
You can, you can ask about dollars and cents, but not names.
I'm not going to. We talked about increasing the permanent subs last year that had college degrees.
That we descertificated.
Yes, certificated. Certified, yes, certified staff.
That comes through negotiations. So I have that on the list.
You have that on Ron's list?
That's not, they're not in, they're not in the, yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, if the board wants to do it differently, traditionally, what is going done was, all the associations go first, and then you do the, any aid adjustments that you want to.
Because these permanent subs are making the same as a 49 secretary.
That was when you and Ron, we worked on it as a separate subcommittee. Ron, should I look? We worked in this as a subcommittee, you, Ron, my stuff.
We're taking the job.
Right.
And we spent several hours on it, it was part of the whole AIDS program that we were gonna put in.
Right.
And it blew up.
Yeah, well, we still need to do something to increase their salaries.
Just, the budget is a roadmap, folks, okay, and this is our, this is the preliminary roadmap. And what I'm saying is, is we can, we surely can't exceed the bottom line, however, we can reallocate within the lines.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, this was the other question I had. Extra comp? This one here, is it? That's our...
Extra compensation?
Yeah, of course. Not line 6.3?
Yeah, that's not, no idea.
That's probably paid unused days.
It could be.
Yeah, probably paid unused days.
For someone to retire?
No, it's for me.
And then, as far as the pre-K goes, is that budgeted in here, that we would be taking in that money?
No. The revenue, absolutely not, but the teachers in the budget.
Then we're okay, we're good with observing the teacher?
Yes, it's moved forward, yes.
Come on, you can make it.
Oh, no.
Not in 30 years. I go deep into that table and get your own Trump. I'll pay the tip, trust me.
It's not a problem. It's, it's about work.
That's all I have. Are there any, are there any other questions, audience?
I'll get back to you on a, on a budget hearing date. There's a window of four days at the end of April. I will come back to you probably Monday and ask a specific date for the budget hearing and say, this is when I'd like to do it. Okay? But, because we're November election, okay? We don't have a timeline that's meaning so aggressive that we have to have the budget into the county, okay? So the April, there's only like less than a half a dozen districts that still have an April election. They go first in the process. So, next Tuesday, I will be submitting the preliminary budget, the motion, to the county, and then it goes in order for review. So until I get the budget back from the county office, reviewed and approved, between the software and the county, we can't have a budget hearing anyway, okay? For a regular budget. So I'll be back to you on Monday with a, with a date and time. Just a reminder while I'm speaking, Monday night, we have a public session here at 7 o'clock here, and then Tuesday at 3 o'clock, we have a joint meeting with the commissioner at 3 o'clock in the afternoon at the town hall. Okay? There's no, when you get to facilities, okay, just, I will talk on facilities, okay? There's nothing on your agenda, I have a pocket motion.
Alright, educational curriculum, please.
Anybody have any questions on any of the agenda items?
Just, well, we're going back to a full week off in February?
What we had talked about in that curriculum, that we thought would be something innovative, if you all agree, is that during the February break, and then possibly again even during the March break, is offer a power hour during that time. We found that a lot of students took the time off anyway, and were sick during that time, and we really found the time important in the past to clean out all of the buildings, have a cleaning service, or merge the men, send them to each building one day at a time, and do a full-blown cleaning. So we had asked that if this was reinstated, what you can see in return is, we start on the 8th. I have the teachers coming two days prior to the start, start of school, just teachers, and then when the students start, they're full days, no more of the half-days there. And then you'll see in January, for the first time, I don't even know since when, an uninterrupted month of instruction. No days off, no half-days.
1964.
Yeah, exactly. No. Last year was the first year we ever did that.
And April, right before the May part, uninterrupted, all the way into May.
So, well, they're moving, Harper. Until April, it's gonna be, it's going to be March, then, then...
How much are they gonna learn in one month?
And then, and then, there's two weeks, and then they moved it up again, so we're gonna have to...
Is that the assignment you got?
Excuse my language.
It is. They take it at different times, and then the classes are also all lit up. Like Caitlin's taking several...
I think there's gonna be changes once they analyze what went on. But also, we pushed the back-to-school nights up, and also merged some of them together, so there wasn't these half-days of back-to-school nights all the way through until October. So I really think, I'm really proud of the work on the calendar.
And, and like Tracy said, the week's left, they're gonna run these workshops.
We'll offer it to...
And do we have time and money in the budget, a lot, to have teachers come, and students come in and do these like winter workshops?
Well, what I, what I talked about in that curriculum was, when I write the NCLB grant, that's gonna be part of the, of an action plan to increase test scores, I don't know now with the, with the part, but I'm still gonna use that verbiage, that that's where I'd like to see the money go, and then we all post, like we do now. And, you know, the staff that do not go away during that time may welcome some extra money, and the parents that have to work and be in a place for their kids, it would really go when, when. Well, you know...
Whatever happens, as long as the kids are there learning.
Yeah. We'll do the weekend as well, but this is just an extra.
What are we gonna do for kids that go away? I mean, the children?
No, weekend as well. We're gonna do weekend as well, but these will be something extra.
Why, is Columbus Day a cap?
We've done that in the past, because then the, the teachers have worked up to be a factor for the staff. And I have to be honest with you, any parent that calls me, I feel very strongly about, and not to put them on the spot, but we have a history teacher here, and he will tell you, I hound them. No one is sitting home celebrating Christopher Columbus or Martin Luther King. So, if they wanna be, if they wanna be educated on it, we do a beautiful program in school, especially through the history departments and the language arts departments. Every, every teacher has to put that in their plans, and there's a component on Christopher Columbus, and there's a component on Martin.
And there was always a week off, and we just celebrate Martin Luther King in February by the president.
Right, right.
Any other questions on the calendar?
But this will also be the first time the kids start full day.
How many half-days compared to this year and two years?
Four hours.
Cut it in half.
Cut it in half. From three, from six to three. Excluding back-to-school.
Right, we don't count full day. Because we rearranged some days so that we'll have two full staff day trainings that first week in September.
As far as the late openings, while we're on the calendar, do you think that 90 minutes would be sufficient to get schools in order? Or is it better the way they do? Seems like the kids come in almost like halfway through the day.
We tried to fix the end, and then the morning got launched up, right.
I'm gonna tell you that we probably could be ready between 9:00 and 9:30, if there's a delayed opening, realistically. 9:30, 9:30...
Not to be argumentative, but we couldn't be ready when we were supposed to be ready. This is last time. We had two parking lots that weren't plowed, there were, there was ice all over the place. Mr. Musso's kid fell down going to school, and you wanna try and push it earlier? I don't think so, but that's just my opinion. I think you need the time in the morning to clear...
I think that's a whole other issue we're gonna discuss at some point tonight, but...
What if we be in the middle and do two...
That doesn't need to be in here right now.
No, but most, that is important for negotiations.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, because wasn't that the...
But two hours is normally, right? Is, I mean, two hours is traditional.
What is the late open?
Wherever day, from 11:00 to 3:00.
But it doesn't, but that's a, that's a misconception. But that's a misconception, that's just a local, that's a local procedure, that a delayed opening is a, is a four-hour day. It can't be less than four hours, it can be more than four hours. So, a lot of places, you delay for two hours, and then there's all two days.
How about with 10 o'clock?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we do two hours, that would make, take you to 10:05, 10:15, 10:20, instead of 11:05, 11:15.
Sometimes it takes the person who's traveling, we lived in the community, think of yourself...
The problem is the staff, though, too, we have to remember, so I have to be their monitor of the kids.
Not for anything, but I used to have to come down from Jefferson.
Right, and that was, exactly.
You know, that was, that was a problem.
Right, absolutely.
And, you know, it's easy if you get out of bed at Lenner's and, you know, you drive, or you go to a college or a bar.
A majority of our people are, are a little...
No, not anymore.
Not anymore, the high school. We had such a disaster the other day in the high school, they had to put two and three classes together. Thank God that the staff is so committed, they came. But it took, it took a good hour after the delay was already started, that everybody was in.
But that was the storm that started at the delayed opening time. So that was a little...
My niece was in, was she then? Takes something like four hours to get home or to school, honest to God.
I wouldn't go longer than that 10.
So, I'm gonna tell you that the two parking lot day that Mr. Bruno spoke about, we opened regular time, we didn't have a delayed opening that day.
But we could have a two-hour delayed opening.
Right.
And still have the rest of the school and add an hour of instruction.
Yes, because right now we go to 11, so just keep the end time.
Two-hour delayed opening, and you go the rest of the day, and you get an extra hour of instruction on a delayed opening.
If you even notice, I mean, this is a silly thing, but even when, when we have a delayed opening, you don't see it on the tape on the bottom of the TV screen, because there's no option for the delay we add. So I don't wanna confuse anyone and say, a two-hour delay or a nine-minute delay, because that's not what ours is. So, when we have a delay, I don't even use that program.
We belong to, we belong to South Bergen Jointure, but it's for transportation, it's for special aid.
Is that region nine?
Yeah, the Jointure.
Is that region nine?
No, South Bergen Jointure.
But it's up to each individual school to call.
I may suggest, folks, because we're reading this pretty good here, what is it now, the delay? What's the time?
Till it's... At 45. Yeah, it's almost 4 hours.
Can we agree to two hours?
Yeah, I think anything better than that.
Can we agree to two hours, 90 minutes, two hours, let's agree to two hours, and we're done?
Alright.
Okay, how does that sound? Most delayed openings, folks, are either 90 minutes or two hours. Since we've never done 90 minutes, let's go with two hours, and let's just, it's done.
And then, well, and then, and then schedule would have to be calculated.
We're good?
All in agreement?
We have to vote, right. Should I add that for Monday night?
You want that under educational curriculum?
We need to trim the parking count.
No, 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 no. We, you'll see in another, probably around May, we'll approve the times for next year. So that, I'll just make that change in the time schedule.
Okay.
That's a reasonable decision. Rules and regs. Okay, rules and regs, folks, there's one item, any questions? There's one item, anything?
Student activities and recognition in the shirt.
There's three things, does anybody have any questions? There's three things on student activities. Show questions.
Uh, any questions on your business?
I may want, I want to add something for the board to discuss. All of you received either on paper or an email concerning the proposal for the reconfiguration of the district magnet schools, construction. Oh, that's a pocket motion?
I have a pocket motion for facilities, Joe.
Want me just to finish? I know you all read it, I'm very happy with what I read. Are we happy with what we read, folks?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that we need to agree, and David, I'm gonna ask you this, if we can vote tonight, because I don't know. Okay, then I am making a motion that we accept the proposal.
Do you wanna read the motion?
End it on that, man, end it on that. That's all, let's get it done. Alright, here we go. You call it a pocket motion, huh? Okay, let's put it in my pocket. Just, just to finish up on that, what the board commissioners are looking for, too, is, is that when this is communicated to them, that this is a program that's approved by your administration, with Tracy and I discussed this the other day. So, a letter, a letter should be sent from the board doing both things, that you have a motion that should pass saying this is what the board wants, that it's something that was already reviewed by administrative staff, and they'll go through who else, because they went through a whole litany of people that they discussed this with, and that this is the program that they're looking to pursue, or in conjunction with the board commissioners. Can I ask the timetable? We're working right now on the redevelopment area portion of this, which is, in the next couple of weeks, there's another, well, we're having the meeting that'll discuss everything. You'll meet the people that we're ready to contract with as a board of commissioners for architectural services, finance services, and the, and the other parts of it to put it together. We're probably looking at a program that may include a referendum either in November or December of this year coming. And then you're, you're looking at maybe three years of construction. So you're, you're a ways off, but that's the quickest that you'll see that happen anywhere.
And the current districting will be frozen until that time?
Unless there's something that the board decides, or indeed what the superintendent needs to do with it in the interim. You know, that is, you know, as far as, as far as I've heard, probably you're not changing anything, but if there's a change, it's something that Tracy will discuss with you, it's got to do with board commissioners. You're on your, nothing with Lincoln School if that was the, I think that's the better question.
Someone from the public at one point had said, what would we do without that, we'd be down at school, and then...
No, Lincoln School will stay until you're done.
Exactly, that would be, that would be the last.
The idea, the thing that was the confusion was the condemnation statement. You know, people perceive condemnation as something that you can't use. Condemnation, we were, we were referring to in a legal sense, that there's a, a public good for a municipal body or state body or whatever to take over certain property. Doesn't mean that it's gonna happen instantly, because that wouldn't be right, that wouldn't work. There's, there's no way to eliminate the school and house the kids, it couldn't do it. So, that would, you would have a school construction first, then you'd have the abandonment of Lincoln School once the new school is open. So basically, you're, you're gonna have the whole reconfiguration in place before you lose Lincoln School.
And unlike many things that have happened in the past, once we approve this, it will be locked, and will happen once it's all completed, there will be no chance for it to be dismantled along the way?
In what sense? I mean, you have, you're, what we're looking, what the commission is looking for, I keep saying it, what the commission is looking for is the commitment to, to basically what we're looking for them to, to replace Lincoln School with. Because the whole idea of the condemnation, it's not a purchase for, for market value, it's a purchase for replacement cost. So, the board of commissioners is actually looking at a situation where they may be turning over 30 or more millions of dollars to the Board of Education in exchange for, for the deed to the property. And then that property would go into a redevelopment zone along with some other areas that are even designated. There'll be a caveat or another portion of that agreement that says that that money must be spent on building a school at, at Matera Field, and it'll have it, what it is that you just agreed, it's not designed, obviously, but in concept, what you, what you've agreed to go with today. So, you know, the schools all stay in place, the money would come for that building from a different source, not subject to a referendum. The balance of the other things that you've seen in that plan, the lunchrooms, the additional classrooms that may be needed, because there's still some open-ended things. What we have in, in that proposal is two operations at Washington and two operations at Jefferson. It may actually be that if the superintendent believes it's best to do three operations at Jefferson and only one at Washington, that's, that's not gonna be a problem. That's, that's not what we're, we're just looking for, basically, the, the stuff with the new school that we're building from the commission. So you have a lot of flexibility from this point till we get to the referendum.
So my question slash prayer is, once we put this in motion, which will be...
Right now.
X-day, we're pretty much committed to it as a community.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right now, you have, you have the commitment with the board of commissioners, they'll pass probably another resolution or a motion, or whatever we're gonna do at that point, dealing with the finance of it, but, yeah, what you choose right now should happen. I'll be very surprised if it doesn't, it would take a very different approach from the commission. Right now, they're committed 5-0 to do this. So something drastic would have to change there, and there's no, right now, there's not even an inkling that anything can change, other than they're getting anxious to find out what you want.
Can we all agree that this is what we want?
That's, that's the motion.
I'm just gonna read them up with the...
And that's where we stop reading.
Okay.
Reading, Joe.
May it resolve that the Lenner's BOE approve a facility plan to be recommended to the Lenner's BOC as to the elimination of Lincoln School and construction of a new three-grade facility on Matera Field. This facility is part of a redevelopment program. I, I make a motion that we approve this facility plan.
Exactly.
Everybody say it.
Everybody say it.
Then... Right. I was gonna do the letter that the proposal is certified on, you know, and send it back. If you need to change anything in your place, do it. I would, I would do that as both signing off on it this way, then there. As I say, you know, they're, they're putting themselves at quite a bit of political risk, because they're gonna blow out the bond almost $40 million. And the last thing they really want is to come back with people saying that the board didn't want this, or somebody didn't want that. I mean, that'd be a pretty, pretty nasty thing to do to, to that group. David, do we need a formal vote?
Yeah, but I have a first and a second, so I'll go. Mr. Abriscado?
Four.
Ms. Alberti?
Four.
Ms. Alcurio?
Four.
Mr. Demas?
Four.
Mr. Grillo?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Schleck?
Four.
Mr. Bruno?
Four.
Mr. Musso?
Motion carried 9-0.
I'd like to say that this is a...
We're gonna have to do that again.
This is a...
Because I didn't have the recorder on, because we were in a work session, and we don't wanna...
I just wanna say, this is a fine moment, that we are, in fact, going to, to move forward on this, because this is, this is, will solve 90% of the difficulties we have with Lenner schools.
Absolutely.
This is space.
Judging by our last, our previous schools, people here 110 years from now will...
Yeah. That's no joke.
Glad we still here, though.
Okay. Next up.
You have another motion, okay?
Another motion.
You have another motion?
What's on your list?
You got any?
Oh, I have a, 'cause some wishes that you haven't got, I think, yet before, babe.
This is for my... This would be for Monday night to put on the agenda. Oh. Well, I, those are, I'm gonna bring some of that up right now. Okay, sorry. Um, so the first thing was that on Monday, Tuesday of this week, I met up here with, uh, Dick O'Vale from the police department and Bobby Jankowski and Pranay Awal. And we discussed the traffic pattern.
Yeah.
On Monday. And everybody was upset with the way things are, are going, uh, trying to improve it. The only problem is we don't believe that changing anything right now will help anything. It will only hurt and make things a little bit more crazy. The good thing about this building is there's only one grade. So after everybody's done this year, we'll have a whole fresh bunch of people come in next year and we can teach them what we want them to do. Something that we decided and they thought would help, sort of like at Franklin, if we could have an aide or a principal or somebody open the doors early, ten minutes early here, and I start to let the kids in, you might alleviate a lot of stress and strain on the, uh, the shooting.
They do open them.
Is that somebody out there?
Like, there's times I get here, I'll say like eight-eleven. Eight-eleven, I know, so, between the three. So eight-eleven, those doors are...
It's not mobile time.
It's mo- most of the... Now it changed. Eight-eleven stays the earliest I've been to any doors have been.
Okay. So David, two suggestions in relation to... They should add, if somebody can come out and then we can put out a, the right button, we just said, should say off. We can put out a message so the parents will say, if somebody's gonna be outside, just let your kids off. Because a lot of what they see is, your parent stops, gets out of the car, comes around, puts the backpack on, kisses goodbye, waits for the kid to walk inside.
Kindergarten, and then what you see is right when it's...
They were all graders.
The problem here in the class, uh, is the bad weather with the snow lines. Because you have all the kids going in the street still, trying to get to the... But it's snow and then you, you can't get over far enough. Like, it's, so you kinda have to almost give one car stop, let the kid out. You gotta wait till the kid's coming in a little more. Otherwise, you're getting out in the snow. So that's, I think, one has been really slow getting down.
They made another suggestion that maybe we could talk to the Amets people about parking there in the morning. They said that people park there anyway. And I'm not sure if they do or they don't, but a lot of people do.
Not if you're crossing guard there, 'cause they'll chase you down and get you out of there.
They said that they thought maybe if that was a possibility, uh, if not, uh, there's also no sidewalks on the New York Ave side, which isn't probably our issue. But maybe we need to talk to the commission. There's no sidewalks on New York Ave and people are walking down New York Ave and cars are coming as they're walking down. In the morning and in the afternoon, I was told, there's two police officers, at least, possibly three.
So you're thinking, are you thinking about a turnaround drop-off in the Amets parking lot?
Yeah.
Like, come around? I noticed, okay.
So if they come in, they turn around and they go...
They turn their drop-off right by a gate?
Yeah.
And they go out? Yes. 'Cause one of the problems, we tried to do it on this property, we couldn't. I didn't really think about the Amets, right?
But if you go in there and talk, evidently, it's a difficult personality at the Amets, but...
I'll talk to them. And we've, we've been okay in the past. And I think if we tell them that we'll plow their entire lot, you know, do all the things and we may have to, uh, indemnify them on insurance in case some, some kind of accident on the property. All right, I'll, I'll bring it up to...
I don't think you wanted to start going to the commission and ask them to put sidewalks in.
We had a grant. We had a grant that we...
It's from the Amets out on that side of the street that doesn't have sidewalks.
We actually had a grant that we, that was prepared for Court Avenue. And when they awarded it, they awarded it for New York Avenue. And let me see if that grant is still, is still viable. I know, you know why they were holding it off? Because of the transit, uh, the opportunity with the new train station.
You're talking...
But I think if you're, if you're gonna drop, if you're gonna pull into the Amets and drop off, there's no need for that.
Right.
Then you're okay. You're all...
Not likely to...
I think this is...
What they said was, if you come, if you come on this side and you're doing the turnaround, it would alleviate all the problems coming out here on Second Ave.
Yeah, you wouldn't need, you wouldn't need this at all. You have all this, you have all that manpower on, on Second Ave.
They were talking about that one way. I thought you were talking about...
On Second Ave? So you don't have to have it, but I don't know if we figure it out.
But I, I was gonna say that there's a problem at all schools. I mean, my, my son, for, he's a, he's a sixth grader now. But he's been standing outside for years while it's raining, while it's snowing, looking inside at the security person, you know, sipping on a hot chocolate while the kids are outside.
I'm gonna have coffee, man. What are you talking about?
Uh, all right. So, um, so the question is, what do, what do districts do about allowing kids inside the buildings?
Tracy?
With school hours?
Um, we, I, I think it goes back to the teacher's schedule that we can't lock them in at, everybody signs in at seven fifty-five. There's gotta be like a flex schedule. Some start at quarter, some start at seven forty-five, some leave at three, two forty-five, some leave at three. But that's gotta really be monitored by the principal. But that's the kind of flex schedule. We have to limit it in the contract to hours and minutes and not time. We can't...
I, I was a kid, I was able to enter the school, I didn't have to, I wasn't locked out of the school until certain...
Well, there's a lot more kids than we're...
Oh, yeah. Line up on a, line up on a...
In the rain, sun, the rain, sun, it sleeps.
But you know what happens is, and this is not just for this district, if you started at five minutes early and, and people start dropping their kids off ten minutes earlier, before you know it, it's a free before-care program. So that's really why you have to...
I understand, I can understand that. But it, I'm just wondering then, is that flexibility?
The flex time will really help that, 'cause we're talking about having a zero period, which means there will have to be an aide there at that time, which means anyone coming in for first period, I think, the doors will be open forty minutes prior to...
All right, so that was pretty much that conversation.